Yes.
I don't see how that's okay.
Well, what they're supposed to do is there's a mechanism where they have to think that's not on. They have undertaken insurance offer.
I've never seen it.
And everything's got to get through with.
More as well.
It's going. Still out there doing it.
I didn't see her.
No, not at all.
I got one in this one.
Well, in marriage.
I have to send out. We've worked. Row, row, just be.
That's it.
There you go.
Call meeting orders.
What the world. United States.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Dattley.
Here.
Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Thorin.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Nivik. Okay, we have. For we have a meeting. Five of the trustees in attendance and one absent. The governor did extend the gubernatorial proclamation allowing us to have remote access to the meetings. Again, this proclamation goes until August twenty third or twenty five. So the next two meetings, we will be able to continue with the remote access. Got Miss Detmer attending via Zoom, Mr. Steele. John, do we hear from Mr. Steele yet this evening?
No.
No? Okay. All right, otherwise we will continue with the meeting. An approval of the minutes on January or July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved Deatley.
Second.
Moved by Deatley, seconded by Prano to approve the minutes of July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. There any corrections or additions to the minutes? There being none, all those in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, since we have nobody remote, I don't believe we need to do the votes.
No one attending remote. It's still not a bad idea for all the persons who may be watching and listening in.
Okay, I will take the council's advice and we will go with roll call votes the rest of the evening. Okay, first off on the president's report, we did the gubernatorial proclamation. The next one is the permit from ComEd, permit number thirty-seven oh seven. Ratify that, please. I don't know. ComEd had an emergency situation about a week ago and needed to get in to repair a land, a line, to maintain the power to residency. So they asked for an emergency permit. It was so issued, and now would like to ratify.
Where was the?
Looking at the thing right here. Replace approximately nineteen hundred feet of cable underground. See the maps. Looks like Belmont. Arlington Parkway.
Over in Saddle Club?
Yeah.
Okay, that, okay.
We've been losing power also.
Yeah, biblical Parkway, Arlington Parkway, Belmont.
That works.
I think the people in Saddle Club appreciate that we ratify. Motion to ratify the Comcast permit number thirty-seven oh seven.
So moved.
So.
Moved by Thor, seconded by Arnie to approve Comcast permit number thirty-seven oh seven. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? If not, roll call, please. Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Thorin.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Okay, five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Another item on the president's report this evening. I was contacted by Metro West this past week. And Metro West is council government that Sleepy Hollow belongs to. And then the big moral of things, Metro West then belongs to Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, which represents two hundred and some odd communities throughout the Chicago area. Well, they have an environmental committee which met with the Metropolitan Planning Council and the Active Transit Alliance Council. And they have decided to pick up a national movement to encourage healthy lifestyles and reduce emissions to the atmosphere by pollution. And they have decided to name this movement, a Move With The Mayor Program. And they tossed this out to the mayors about ten days or so ago. And the deadline to apply for this thing was at noon on Friday. So it didn't give us any chance to have a discussion about this. So I just went ahead and made an executive decision. And I have entered Sleepy Hollow in the Move With The Mayor campaign. And I have suggested two activities for the village of Sleepy Hollow in this Move With The Mayor campaign. One will be a tour of the hollow, which will take bicycles, meet up Sabatino Park, go east on Hillcrest to Locust, up Locust to Acorn, Acorn around to Glen Oak, Glen Oak back to Windmore, Windmore back to Sabatino Park. Those who wish to stop at Sabatino Park on the first leg can do so. Those who wish to continue to the second leg, we will go thoroughbred to Sleepy Hollow Road, Sleepy Hollow Road south to Crane Drive, Crane Drive north to Hilltop. Hilltop, we will circle around Saddle Club, and then we will come back down Rogue Rock to Sabatino Park. That will be one of the events for the Move With The Mayor. This will allow us to have contact with the residents, ride through the neighborhoods. Those who don't care to ride, we're going to need somebody at the starting point for, you know, the registration and sag wagons and roadside assistance and stopping traffic and whatnot. So that will get the rest of the board involved in this thing. The other item that I have offered up for this Move With The Mayor campaign has been a hilltop, or a hill climb challenge. I will ride up Rogue Rock on a given morning. We will mark my time, and then the challenge is open to the rest of the village to see who would like to use my time. On a bicycle. Line over some bike cars. So those are the two items that I have proposed to the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus as the village of Sleepy Hollow's entries into the Move With The Mayor program. Now, this is to be done sometime between September first and October fifteenth. So we've got a couple of weeks to get this thing put together and planned out. But those are the two items that I've thrown out there, and I think we can do without too much difficulty. I know the chief has yet to, he's like, oh, he's going weird, a lot on bicycles, with how many people, how many roads are we going to have to have the clothes for how long?
Call the state police.
Well, it just spuns the village off from them. Nobody will be allowed in or out. Yeah, there, yeah, there's a lot of details to be worked on this box, but I said, yeah. I had to have a response back to the caucus by noon Friday, so I just said, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I think you've talked about, you know, having something to do with the residents and getting together besides all of July and Halloween at once.
Well, did the other municipalities also?
This is all to everybody.
Right, so they all have their own.
They'll all have their, yeah, well, not all of them, but I, yeah, I'm sure some of them are.
Sure. September fourth is like the drive in the city, so.
Well, we won't do it before. We'll let Lori have that. I was thinking more on the autonomous acronyms, more like, you know, the green first. Give us, you know, about a month to get this thing planned up, six weeks. You know, get things out and used and laid up. Okay, Mr. Steele, welcome aboard. So I will keep you all posted on that, but I just thought I'd let you know that that's in the works. One of the nice things, though, is this group, the Alliance to Transit Activity, does have planning material for this kind of stuff. So, yeah, they will help us with the routes and what's not, you know, to get this thing rolling. So we'll have a little assistance on getting this put together. It's also deemed somewhat supported and sponsored by the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program, which is a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. It's available for walking, biking paths in the area. So I'm not quite sure. Our path out here goes into the open space, the township. But we stole that fortune, the majority of that, to them three or four years ago. I was wondering, we might be able to work a program where what Sleepy Hollow did might contribute toward that trail maintenance. We can sort of give them credits for their trails, since we don't have a trail per se. Just a thought, it's early in the, the idea, but. Also gives everybody about six weeks to practice climbing Rogue Rock. Okie doke, that's it for the president's report, folks' report.
I was going to say something, but after your report about climbing Bo, Bo Brown, I think I will keep my comments to myself and just let the record reflect that I did not participate in the selection of that idea.
Okie doke. All right, thank you. Uh, planning and zoning mission, a couple of reports for them, Ms. Detmer?
All right, yes. Good evening, board members, and President Pickett. Daniel Adalano, acting chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, asked me to report to this evening. The Village of Sleepy Hollow Planning and Zoning Commission, PZC, met July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, and conducted two public hearings for text amendments. The PZC recommends the village board add as a permitted use for the B two Village Business District in section eight dash five dash two, B one of the Sleepy Hollow Municipal Code banquet facilities. The commissioners also felt that you should know that during the second public hearing, four individuals testified they opposed the self-service storage addition. However, no one gave the reason for their opposition. The PZ, PZC also recommends the village board approve following text amendments, specifically the first, A, to add as a special use for the B two Village Business District in section eight dash five dash thirteen C of the Sleepy Hollow Municipal Code, self-service storage units. And then B, to add a definition in section eight dash one dash five of the Sleepy Hollow Municipal Code for self-service storage units as, in quotes, "a building or group of buildings partitioned into individual secured divided spaces or consisting of enclosed or unenclosed floor space that is divided by secured pods or other storage devices to be leased or rented to persons to access, store, or remove items of personal property on a self-service basis." That was the report from the commission. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Detmer? No ma'am, we have none.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, those items will be picked up later under new business. So next item is the attorney report, Mr. Shuster.
I have no report this evening, Mr. President. Sure, I'll be joining some discussion later on.
Wow.
In the agenda.
Uh, Mr. Steele.
Uh, good evening, sorry for my tardiness. The only thing that I have on the agenda is the approval for the Comcast permit. This to replace cable that is broken and needs repairs. Basically, they're just replacing the cable right at the intersection of River Ridge and Moncosky Road.
Hey, we have a motion to so approve the Comcast permit request JB one oh six four two oh seven.
So moved Deatley. Seconded.
Moved by Deatley, seconded by Arnie to approve Comcast request for permit. Number, I think that permit number is JB one zero six four two zero seven. Is there any further comments, questions, or discussion? Being none, roll call, please. Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Thorin.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Steele, back to you.
That is it, unless somebody has some questions.
I've got a quick question for you. The last meeting, we approved the road project for this season. And it is approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars less than what we'd anticipated.
Yeah.
We got any ideas of what we can do with that twenty-eight thousand, since we already budgeted it?
A lot of patching. Unless somebody has a, we could probably do a cul-de-sac if you know of a cul-de-sac that's in dire need, or maybe just a little bit of stretch of road.
Okay.
Everybody keep your eyes open, so if you see something, but yeah, I was planning on putting some of that towards additional patching.
Okay. I was just going to say, yeah, it's, was nice that it came in under our estimate.
Yep. Yeah.
Already budgeted, let's go ahead and use it.
Yeah, luckily, some of the ditch work came in under cost, at least as far as what we were planning, so.
Okie doke. That's all I have for you. All right, thanks a lot, Jeff. Uh, next, Director of Finance, Mr. Bam.
Request a motion to approve the warrants in the amount of eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-two cents.
Guys, file.
Seconded.
Moved by Hoffman, seconded by Deatley to approve the accounts payable for August first, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-two cents. The additions, deletions, comments, or questions?
Second one with the ponds in it. We're going to talk about that.
Let's read on which one, which page number?
Page six. Hold on, thirteen thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents.
No, is that one that we discussed previously in some of our?
No.
Meetings?
No, that.
What actually is that? Can you explain it? This, or are you involved?
Over and say you guys approve. And call for replacements.
Okay, so is that part of, I mean, over by Acorn too, or?
Yeah, Acorn and Katrina, Van Tassel, Van Tassel's not done yet, Old Brown Ford. Frame.
Okay, so it's all combined, the ones that we.
There's still one left.
Is Ponds the one that would do that thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't recognize that, that name, that's why I was asking, asking.
Yes, Van Tassel, the one on Van Tassel's, the only one.
Okay. All right. Okay. No further questions? No further questions or comments, roll call, please. Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Gattler.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Thorin.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Want to give any update on the website? I'll be having training on August eighth on how to do modifications to it. And they're telling me that the website should go live on August nineteenth. So things are just moving along. Part of the package was our first payment to them for the work that they've done so far. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Gene. Okay, next item on the agenda is comments from the public. Please note that the reported ordinance section one dash five dash four F of the village code. Comments to the public follow our finance director's segment. Comments are limited, five minutes per person. Commentary sent. Save my breath. Okay, next item, trustees reports, roads and parks. Mr. Hardy.
Uh, last week, the local one fifty strike that began on June seventh has been settled. So Jeff was right when he sensed that that was going to happen shortly. What that means for the village is the road program can now get back on track. And we're in line to get cement and asphalt. So that settlement was long awaited. Uh, if you've noticed, tree trimming crews have been in the village along Sleepy Hollow Road and some of the side roads, crane timber, et cetera. I've made it a point just to talk briefly to the crews each day, and they've got a job maintaining aesthetics and still making electric power readily available to the residents. I haven't had any complaints about the trimming. And then wrapping, wrapping that up if they're not done already, so. Last week, ironically, a day after the strike was settled, I had a meeting with village engineer Jeff, head of Public Works Kyle. And the meeting was about drainage priorities in the village. We've got a lot of drainage challenges ahead of us. With that, I will catch Kyle by surprise, but I've asked him, we're, we're talking about an agenda. I am here on Willow Lane. And I've asked Kyle if he would give a little history to where we're at, what happened there, or if he would recommend.
Okay, so. We had that drainage tile collapse on the house that's on Old Brown, or Bullfrog Road. In doing so, we had dirt, the neighbor over at nine forty-one Willow, nine forty-three Willow, has a swell that has constant standing water. So the contact, the contractor contacted me. I said, yeah, sure, go ahead and put the, fill the swell and see if we can get standing water out. The issue in doing so is now standing water has gone up into the yards at nine forty-one Willow and nine forty-three. It has no way of coming down the hill and getting to the swell line. So I talked to the residents, both residents, and met with the engineer, trustee Arnie. And in your packet, there's a, there's three options to do. And then it actually a fourth to that, and put it in there, but we'll look for that. Option number one would be to put a eight to twelve inch culvert in, and then tie it to an existing drain structure in the yard at nine forty-one Willow, which is already there. Talked to Jessica Pounds, she's a resident there. Uh, her concern is overwhelming that drainage structure. Uh, the engineer doesn't think that it'll overwhelm it. That's the cheapest route. And then there's option two of diverting the swell and connecting it to what we've already done on Willow last summer and going west with it. Um, option three would be to do both ways. So you had to pitch the, the swell to go to nine forty-one, nine forty-three Willow. That's the most expensive option. And then option four would just be to pull the dirt out, leave it how it used to be, which will be standing water and swell.
Okay, you've got one of them. First option is nine forty-three to nine forty-one.
First option is the one that's quoted for twenty-five hundred bucks, twenty-six hundred bucks.
Okay.
That's option one, and that would be to go take the water and go east into the drainage that's circling the orange. That's our, that's the existing structure there.
So you would dig up the road there?
We'd dig up the driveway.
The road. Option two.
Uh, so option two.
Is the fifty-five hundred, fifty-seven hundred?
Yeah, and that's to take all the water and go west. So you're digging up the driveway at nine forty-three Willow. And connecting it into the catch basin. These won't be, these aren't, they say, I don't know, here says culvert, it would be, it wouldn't be daylight. It would just, it would go directly into the structure.
Okay.
The only part that would be daylight is the intake side.
The, just, sorry for buttoning here. I would recommend, oh, go, there we go. Sorry, screen started sharing here. Um, so basically, as I would choose, if we had to do one of them, is option number one, mainly because that is obviously the shortest, and also with the location that's tying into that pipe that goes underneath Willow is actually a twelve inch pipe, so it has more than enough capacity for the amount of water that's coming into there. Um, also, as you can see, that catch basin, that's actually at the corner of Bullfrog and Willow. It has two outlets now, and those are basically brand new rotted pipes, so they should be able to handle flow. If you go with option number two is, if you recall, is, that's a brand new catch basin that was installed. And it actually has two pipes, I think that's the one with two pipes that actually is underneath the road there, and it just basically is a chokehold, and as you recall, there's always standing water within that swell that's on the opposite side of the road. So while it might be able to drain that way, is, it'd just be a harder route to go rather than actually going underneath the, just the one driveway for option number one.
In the past, we've had issues with that driveway being underwater.
Which one?
Uh, nine forty-three or?
Uh, the one on the north side of Willow.
Yeah. Yeah, and. We. Yeah, yeah, and we believe that's because that pipe that we actually, that pond's just replaced, when was it, a couple of weeks ago or whatever it was? It was collapsed in areas, and actually, the one that's going across Bullfrog is, that's a new connection, so it should be able to drain pretty well right now. Is, it was just so collapsed, that pipe that was actually running along Bullfrog, that it wasn't actually allowing a complete amount of water to flow through there.
Oh, yeah, so I'm not gonna interrupt you, Jeff, but that, the pipe we just replaced, that also was not connected to that mantle.
Oh, so there we go.
In essence, it only had one pipe going, now it has two going, you know.
One of them goes to the northwest, and the other one goes more north.
Yeah, one goes straight north to the culvert, the big culvert that we replaced, and then the other one goes to the north, northwest corner where that patch is, yeah.
Jeff, you think that's a better choice than the second one?
Yeah, just because basically is the two pipes, if we go towards option number two, is obviously you have more distance now, rather than having the culvert underneath, or which, what am I doing here? Sorry, you're gonna have, even though you're gonna have the twelve inch culvert on the other side, is you're still gonna have a longer path for the water to go into that catch basin. And it is very low slopes along that whole area in front of nine forty-three, and then also when it's going into that catch basin is, there's two pipes, or is that three pipes that are underneath that road, Kyle?
For the new catch, at the new catch basin?
Yeah.
I believe it's two six inch pipes.
Yeah, so they're, they're smaller pipes, and the reason why they're smaller pipes is because of the cover that's under, in order to go underneath Willow. So actually is, just adding any more water into that might cause any ponding inside the catch basin, around that catch basin, option number two.
So we, up until the dirt was put into the ditch, we'd never had water in our front yard. It was completely dry. Nine forty-three has had standing water on either side of the driveway, so our concern is that now it's redirecting it to our front yard. There's a little bit of length there. I don't know if you're tying into the sewer, right, in our front yard?
Yeah, into that.
Okay.
So is that gonna be completely underground?
Yeah, the pipe you won't see. You'll only see the, the pipe in between the three yards where the water's catching, like where it goes in, and then it's gonna catch into that storm drain.
How far down is that gonna be?
I can't give an answer on that. They'll have to do it based on elevations and how much pitch they need on the pipe.
The concern for us is just that it becomes swampy, and I mean, if there's water there, we put in a lot of money, things, we're gonna turn back here just to use it a few years ago. It's been going dry, really happy, and then here we go, there's a lot of rainfall two weeks ago, and we have a family party, and there's a pond in our side yard. Just, you know, disappointing, so if I would prefer not to see it if it's underneath and ties to the sewer, or I just don't want it spilling in front, in front of our mailbox, right there in our front yard, where we can't mow and we have this issue again.
Your nine forty-one, right?
Yeah.
Either option is viable, so.
Thousand dollar difference between two options.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and option number one is it'd be connecting directly into the catch basin. And then obviously with option number two is, it'll be basically daylighted the whole way along there.
So if they do put it in, will they regrade it to?
Yeah, so the dirt that was put there is just to fill it, they'll grade it out to make it a proper swell, clean up the big rocks, topsoil, grassy and all that, so it would be a finished, finished look.
And since we just put that catch basin then across the street, we know those pipes leading out are clean and healthy.
They're good, they're, yeah, they're good.
So we put this in there. Anthony?
I know, you know, a few minutes ago or so, we talked about some excess money on the road project. Jeff, if, if. Let me phrase it this way. The difference in the price of the two projects, if just for a moment, just for this conversation, the next two minutes. If money was not an objection, what method would be best long-term?
Really is, both options are good, it's just cost-wise, and also with option number two is, you're going to see standing water in those swales. It might not be for a long period of time, because obviously is, that water is, all you're doing is putting a culvert underneath the driveway, and then the water's going to be flowing from underneath the culvert, and then into that catch basin, and then that goes across Willow. Where with the other option is, you're directly at that point of where all the, the standing water is at the moment, and you're directing it straight into the catch basin and straight in underground, which then goes across Willow and then over across Bullfrog or along Bullfrog.
Thank you, I know you're the expert in this, and, you know, I just bring it up to see, but obviously I would not want to see any standing water later on, so if the first option eliminates a large percent of that movement forward. Obviously, you know, we get the monsoon deluge, it's not gonna help anywhere, but, okay, well, thanks for explaining it through. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. Any other questions or comments? Discussion? You got a motion on one of the options?
I make a motion that we go with the option one. Which is the twenty-five ninety-five. Total, right, let's see, yeah, to correct the issue with that proposal, with that problem.
Second. Okay, moved by Piranho, seconded by Thorin to approve option number one in the amount of two thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars. Any further comments, questions or discussion?
Just to go on the record, I made the motion based on what Jeff was telling me that this would prevent any standing water, which I think is a good thing to do. That's all I have.
That quote's pretty solid?
Yeah.
Okay, no other comments or questions, discussions? Roll call please. Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Brano.
Aye.
Mr. Gatley.
Aye.
Mr. Thorin.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes. Okay.
One other quick miscellaneous item I do have in my possession from a Burke company, a hard, if people wanna call it, contract for the park equipment, naturally. This is like a representative contract. But as a board, I would like, no later than the end of October, to discuss what option we're gonna do with the playground equipment.
You went there on agenda item for first of September?
When's the next meeting?
Next meeting will be the fifth, sixth of August, otherwise we're talking.
That's your the first one in September?
September.
Well, that doesn't give us a lot of time, does it? Now. I know, I know one of the options is still being looked at. Let's go to October.
October?
October, yeah. Well, we need a contract signed if we want to save the cost increase by the end of December. So we still have two months.
October third is the first meeting in October.
Yeah. And prior to that, I'll furnish everybody with a example of the contract that they're proposing, that we've gotta decide where some money's coming from.
Okay. Maybe the hill climb challenge. Well, there might be side bets.
Nothing else to report.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Finance, Mr. Hoffman.
No, hold on, just a quick Kyle question on. I saw that today, the water products, that was for hydrants or something?
Yeah.
Is that something that we do every year or whatever, or?
Well, I have, there's three fire hydrants that are working in town. So what happened was, there was a mix-up with the company ordering fire hydrant. We had a DUI incident, took out a fire hydrant, and a contractor come in to replace the fire hydrant. I haven't been on vacation. Fire hydrant never showed up from where I normally, from water products, so the contractor went and picked up one. So that fire hydrant under Water Services Bill is going to the insurance company. The fire hydrant that finally came, I'm gonna use for, for the whole drive this. It's, it's been two years since it's been operable.
Did we get reimbursed from the insurance company yet, or is that still ongoing?
I've submitted some of the stuff, I still gotta submit my time and hours to Eugene for that, but he's got, he's got the major, the major bills.
Going for everything. I mean, everything. You know, we're gonna bring up Hilltop, that's gonna come up later. Okay, that was very much, the twenty-eight thousand we got for roads, so I, I know that there's a lot of, it's a lot of roads in the village that probably could use some patching. Locust for one, but we're gonna address that at some point, aren't we? Locust is getting real bad.
Yeah, actually, is, there is some patching that we're actually doing on Locust with this program. I was hoping that I could actually extend that out too and use some of those funds on that, so really, we're just kinda doing, since we're gonna be eventually, hopefully, next year is actually repaving Locust, is, it's just kinda getting all that prep work as far as where the bad locations are, so we can actually then just repave it then next year.
And one other too, is I, like you, like around the village, you know, all the time. Barbara, this is for you this time. I just see a lot of, this year, a lot of different vehicles that are well over the specs, sitting in driveways. I don't know, I mean, it could be trailers, it could be boats, it could be whatever, but there's a lot of them, and don't we have codes that say you can only leave it there X amount of days, or a week or two, or something like that? And I know November the first is coming up, but, you know, I mean, I've brought it up before, if we're not compliant, then, you know. We're suffering enough for funding, so, not that I wanna see funding come that way, but, you know, I hate to say it, it is what it is. I mean, we've got, you know, regulations in the village, and we need compliance, and it just seems like there's a lot more, might be in specific as to where, but anybody can just take a ride around the village, and it just seems to be pretty rampant this summer.
It shouldn't be a matter for your code of proportion.
Who?
So, but he would need, you, if I'm wrong, he would look for you to identify for him the addresses that you have a concern about.
It's no specific address, it's just that, you know, I'm out all the time with my bike, and.
I know, Mark's saying, as if you see an address, give it to Jeff and have him look into it. That's the way he operates.
Probably be more diligent November the first, when they're supposed to be out.
Well, sure.
Okay.
Thank you, George. Water and sewer, Mr. Nemic is not with us, we have no report. Word is, is that the agreement with Westundy on the sewage will be completed shortly and be given to us for finalization. Moving on, police and public safety, Mr. Deatley.
A couple things, a couple shout-outs to some of our officers for how they handle situations. And I say this in all sincerity, our police officers don't give enough credit, so that's why I bring these names up, and what they do, and when people give us a batter boy, I want that to be recognized. Officer Glenn Edwards, and Chief can help me explain this as well, he investigated an accident in the village. The person who was involved in the accident was so impressed by the way Officer Edwards handled things, and took care of things, he actually rode a ladder and brought it to the village hall. Commending Officer Edwards for how he, how he treated him, how he treated the situation, and he said that's how policing should be done. So appreciate Officer Edwards' work on that. It's, it's nice to hear those comments. Also, Officer Diori, she went and investigated that, you know, somebody left their garage door open, and people were very impressed that she gave the time to come and check with them, and check around the house and make sure everything was taken care of. And then she explained her different things to the homeowner about how they can make their house safe, you know, when they're not there. Chief, did I miss anything there on this?
No, the, the is with Officer, Officer Edwards was, one of the nights, we had one of real bad storms, and the guy was just, he was coming down Bullfrogs, lost it, couldn't see the road, ended up in a ditch, and so Officer Edwards was out with him in the driving rainstorm, and I was able to get him out of it. And Officer Diori was, just drive around, and I saw the garage, the garage door open, and left a crime prevention notice, talked to the resident, made a comment to go Navy, had a, apparently had a Naval Academy sign up, so the officer wrote that on there, and so I just like when the residents recognize what the officers are doing, and they're out there every night. We, we take our share of heat for other things, but, you know, that I really like to hear.
Thank you. Yeah, so very good news, good things going on with the police force. The next thing that I am very happy to see on the agenda tonight, the chief has identified the, what we call a speed tracker black box. That will be, can be put in different parts of the village. What this box will do, it will give us an idea of traffic counts. It will give us an idea of what's the speeds are on those roads, so we have proper data, other than just, you know, well, I thought a car was speeding down that road, or they were going too slow, or whatever. So we can actually use this on a lot of different things that will allow the chief to be able to set his patrols up differently where he wants cars to sit. And we can actually get some real, real data to use going forward in our traffic, our problems that we have in the village. So I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with purchasing the speed tracker box in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. This money will come from the increased fees that were put onto your capable stickers, so that's where that money is coming from. So move, Harney.
Moved by Harney, seconded by Piranho to authorize the purchase of a speed tracker box in the amount of eighteen, one thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. Hey, we got a one percent discount if we bail it in thirty days.
There you go.
Seven eighteen dollars and ninety-four cents.
Is this bike?
Comments, questions or discussion?
How do you make it theft group? Is it on hold?
It's, yeah, it can be, actually, it can be mounted on a steel pole, it can be mounted on a wood pole, or round pole, it's got multiple mounts for it. It's hooked from the inside and then locked, so we can secure it. It also comes with, buying it comes with one year of free cloud storage, so it'll, it'll actually remote, I can have it come to my phone, I'm not sure I want it to come to my phone. I can have it actually come to my phone, give me reports on that. The representative said it's really not necessary. The way we plan on using it by moving it around, after that would be free fifty a year, but I don't think it's money we need to spend, since we're gonna be taking it down, like, bring it here and just download it, and spend the money on that. But yeah, it's, it'll give us really good data, things we can use to write grants, apply for grants, things like that, it's good solid data that we'll be able to use for the next ten years.
And use the radar later?
It's, it's got a radar inside of it, it's a rechargeable battery, it lasts ten days to two weeks, it'll last, and there's really no reason to keep it out more than that in one location, usually about a week or, week, eight days is what you usually leave it out and then bring it back in, then kinda pop it somewhere else. So I may tell us off with a couple.
We'll put them on the square, black, powder, the black post that you see, some of them are centered around, and then with that, there's a security pole that we have that you can't get off with regular red.
About damage or anything like that, it's inconceivable. It's possible, it's pretty nondiscreet, I mean, it's literally just a square, white box, it doesn't look like any.
It's eleven by twelve. The size of a piece of paper.
And the reason I recommended this one versus the one that, there's one that mounts on the ground that you actually have to screw into the ground. Those tend to get damaged more readily. And you can't put them out in the wintertime, because the flowers would take away, I mean, so this one we could use.
Hey, George, it's got a doppable radar. Hey, George, it's got a dot for radar. We can get the level. Okay. Any further comments, questions or discussion? Not all, please. Mr. Prado.
Hi.
Mr. Dattler.
Hi.
Darty.
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, gentlemen.
How soon before uh we get it?
Now that I'm authorized to order it, I'll go ahead and get it ordered. They said it was, because they actually manufacture them when we order it, they don't keep in stock. So it's probably gonna be about six to eight weeks. So I'll get the order placed as soon as possible.
That's all I have for this.
All right.
If I could just make one mention, just uh, I forgot to put it in my board report. Tomorrow night is National Night Out. Um so we will have a presence in Carpenter Park. Uh one of the things I told the uh, the mayor, we were talking. Last year I had two officers show up and I showed up. This year we're gonna have six officers of ours signed up to be there. We're gonna have one of our officers in a, I'm probably sharing state secrets here, but he's gonna be in the headless horseman costume. So if people come out there and take pictures with him and things, so we're looking to have more of a footprint out there if we can.
Also, just the comment on that, the service club's gonna be set up with uh selling hot dogs and a couple of, you know, some of this over there and uh it's five, well, uh it's five to eight. We're gonna be set up around four o'clock with uh selling hot dogs and some stuff.
You have fun night.
At what part?
It's sharing with uh East Dundee and Sutie Hall are kind of sharing the issue.
Yeah, Carpersville, East Dundee, West Dundee.
Right on the bike trailer.
Back up behind.
Yeah, there's like an industrial area in Carpersville there. Yeah, right. We're Main Street down to the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
It's the middle.
Yeah, there's a ban shell there in the corner there.
And that's it. Thank you, Steve and Chief. Uh buildings and environments.
Uh no reports, Mr. Prado.
Thank you, Mark. Building and zoning, Mr. Prado.
Uh Chief, is that a question? How many hours is the code enforcer um doing now, safe for most of the week?
He's five, eight hours a week. That's about the most he does.
Uh Ms. Dattler, do you have any other comments on building and zoning? General comments at all or?
No, sir.
Okay, just answer. I know there was uh some information I passed on to you. Uh so I just wanna make sure that that letter was, that you got it and that you're, you're looking into that matter.
Yes, sir. And um Mr. Schuster's also um had that forwarded to him as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Anthony. Uh old business. Okay, under old business. You got the repair and replacement of the culvert along with the paving proposal for one twelve Hilltop Lane. Uh this has come up at the last meeting. There seemed to be some confusion. There was a water main that broke on Hilltop Lane located under the driveway at one twelve Hilltop. In replacing the broken water main, the village damaged their culvert. Now, question now is, does the village pay for this replacement of this culvert or do we pass this cost off to the homeowner?
I believe since the village caused the problem, I believe we should report.
Okay.
I know it's precedent. Some people say it's precedent. It's gonna, you know, bite us down the road. I understand that, that I'm a firm believer that you take responsibility for what you do. And we should make sure that.
Okay, Connor, you weren't here, but we're now with that. The water main, I mean, the box and the water main are on the customer's driveway or residence driveway? Is that the case?
No, it's the water main. The ser- the service line is to the west of the driveway.
So the line that we replaced, just to get it straight, because things changed since the last meeting when I talked to you, you know, too. Uh we're saying that the line that we're responsible for was beyond the culvert and on the residence property, correct?
It's the water main, yeah.
It's on our, you've been, or beyond our?
It's our.
Okay, so. So where we went, even though it was over the driveway, that was part of the village easement. If I'm correct, that wasn't communicated before. So it's changed from the last meeting.
Now somehow the last meeting, everybody was confused and they thought there was a Buffalo Box and a service line involved. There was not a Buffalo Box or a service line involved. What we could not answer because neither the engineer nor Kyle were here was that it was strictly the water main.
So, and the main was put in by the village after the driveway was installed.
Right. Well, and I mean, most, most of the main here has, so I think too, I understand there's confusion with it, but I think um this has been going on since the main break was in April. The quote was submitted in May. I think we need to come to the decision too. It's not just the water mains that I'm concerned about because the main breaks the main break. The culvert, I understand questioning it, but the culvert was functional before we had fixed the main break. I think we should have fixed it. Uh the board should have a understanding too of there are service lines too that go into the driveway. The builder put them in. Don't know why they're on the driveway, but they are. We have a ordinance that from the B box to the street is ours. So if there's a leak at the B box, we have to dig up the driveway to fix it. Um I don't know if we wanna have a set guideline of if it's in the driveway, we're gonna pave the driveway and pave that spot and we have to dig up no matter what. If it's water leak that we're responsible for, I think we have to do the whole uh fixing with everything. I mean, you can say the water mains in someone's yard are just gonna dig it up and then build it in the gravel and say, okay, you guys absolutely don't see that, but.
All right, but for the my time being, uh the issue right.
This is the driveway, it's a water main break.
The water, the water main break under the gentleman's driveway or the resident's driveway. We damaged the culvert in the repair. Do we pay for the culvert?
And to uh back, back up with Mr. DiAtly said, uh we, as a board, we really need to look all these things on an individual basis, but certainly uh due to us fixing something and causing harmful damage, then yes, I, I believe for the village should pay for that with fixing. But each case should be brought to us individually and discussed as we're doing this one.
So Mark, does that mean we uh set a precedent for this?
Well, everything, everything, everything will be uh referred back to any other decision.
Right, it'll be referred back to this. And that's why I was so adamant against it before. And I understand, you know, the village damaged it. We had to get to the box, but also understand where the hell was the builder's head?
There was no box. There is no box. With the water main line.
Well, the water main, I mean, but, but do they usually run water mains on their driveways? They do in saddle club. You told us that.
Yeah. They're, they're on your driveways all the time.
You know, at least half of the village. I looked at the uh, the plans for, it was the septic tank plans. They had the, the plans from before the water main was in there and spoke of adding a well. And then the next set of plans talked about the water main, right? They were doing, again, another septic system. But on this one, it showed the water main and where they put the water main, they should, they should have moved it. They went from the south side of the driveway, underneath the driveway, to the north side of his garage to enter his house. So they ran the line underneath his driveway rather than moving the uh connection further north. George, keep in mind too, when, when I, when, I don't know the year this water main was installed, but they're also competing with gas main, electric. Uh not, not that part of town, the super main and other parts of town. And so they, the engineers, I mean, you guys will see, I mean, when we do a, the water main project, you'll see the engineers' plans and where the water main can run. And not necessarily, might not run in the middle of the road. It'll be through the someone's yard or.
I guess, looking at our development, I guess we got lucky because I know where my water main is. I know where my gas is and I know where cable electric is. And they used some common sense with putting it in. Just seems like I, I guess I'm just concerned that, you know, this starts happening is, as dwellings start to age and pipes start to age. We're opening up our, we're, you know, we're opening up a Pandora's box and uh, you know, we just don't have the funding.
On the water main. Not on the water main, we're not opening the box. The only thing we're admitting to is that we destroyed his culvert.
But that could happen in the future if we do up. That's what I mean.
Right. Right. As far as the Buffalo Boxes and the Service Lines, that's a completely different issue.
Right. But do we notify the resident the next time that if we drive over their culvert? It could damage it or something like that or, I mean, are we staying there, Mark, saying something like that or?
Well, if I was, if I was the homeowner and you came to me and said, we have to repair the water main, but I'm gonna roll over your culvert and may damage it. As a homeowner, I'm gonna tell you, you do not have my permission.
Put damage in the, probably the uh.
Sometimes you don't have a choice. The main break was on the middle of the driveway. There's nowhere else to access the fucking driveway.
That's, to me, it's just crazy. I just can't get my head wrapped around that, that damn water main. I mean, the water line is right in the middle of the driveway. I mean, that's crazy.
You know, the situation. The situation's changed since it was first introduced. It's confusing. But why would the village be responsible for?
For the culvert? Because, because before we were, before that day, the culvert was functionally designed.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, why aren't?
Oh, why aren't we, yes.
Yeah, it's changed from before.
Well, I said, the question was whether there was a service line in the B box and we did not have the two individuals that had the answer. So now we've got that. There is no service line. There is no B box. It's just a water main that we had to replace and in the process we did the.
I think we're seeing a consensus.
So we have a motion to repair and replace the culvert and the paving at one twelve Hilltop Lane. Moved by Harney, seconded by Thorne to authorize the repair and replacement of the culvert as well as the paving at one twelve Hilltop Lane. Any further comments, questions or discussion? Being none, roll call please. Mr. Hoffman.
I with reservations.
Thank you. Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Prado.
Hi.
Mr. Dattler.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Uh we have the five affirmative votes and no negative votes. The motion so passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, that takes care of old business. Any other old business to come forth? Okay, there being no other old business, we move to new business. And the first new business is ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash nine. Amending the zoning regulations to add a special use to the B two Village Business District. We have a motion to solve prove ordinance twenty-two dash nine.
So move, DiAtly.
Second.
Moved by DiAtly, seconded by Hoffman to approve ordinance twenty-two dash nine, amending the zoning add special use to the B two District banquet facilities.
Pardon, pardon me. Banquet facilities are not to be a special use. They were to.
Okay, Mr. Reed, missed, well, it's in my title. Sorry. I'm okay. It's on my.
It's a permitted.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm.
Just to be clear, uh and thanking Mr. Dattler, the, the ordinance in the package correctly describes it as adding a new permitted use. Yes. The agenda listing uses the word special use.
Right, it's just.
Okay. It's meant to be an additional permitted use in B two zone.
Yeah, I, I just heard.
I'm sorry, it's consistent with the report of the Planning and Zoning Commission that Mr. Dattler gave just earlier.
Okay, ve- very good. It's just that I heard the motion say it is a special use. So I just wanted to make sure that our motion is correct.
Correct, absolutely. All right.
Thank, thank you.
I stand corrected. Ordinance number twenty-two dash nine is ordinance amending the village zoning regulations to add an additional permitted use. That to wit is a banquet facility, F one, to be determined. Okay. We had a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay. Any further comments, questions or discussion?
So the one question, the one conversation I would just bring up briefly is and it's actually even for myself, when we approved this motion and this change, all we're doing is saying that in the future, we are allowing this use, that we're allowing this potential use. Same way we did when I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission and we did a use to allow the uh Maxway Motors to win. Uh you know, when individual comes, they decide that they wanna pursue something. Uh we're just, by saying yea or nay to this, we're not saying we're automatically doing something. We're allowing someone to come. You know, so we're looking for the future of the village that things change, that potentially opportunities come up. And in this example, banquet facility is our, is our latest opportunity. I'm sorry, Mr. Schuster.
Well, I, yes, well, you if you recall, the Maxway Motors uh situation was a two-step process. First, there was a recommendation to allow motor vehicle sales in the village. Then Maxway Motors came in and applied to uh uh be allowed just to open a motor vehicle sales facility uh at a location in the B two district. And so uh you know, when it, when it started, it was just to allow motor vehicle sales. Uh then, as you described, someone uh applied to take advantage of that opportunity.
Okay. Any further comments, questions, discussion on uh twenty-two dash nine? Roll call please. Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Mr. Arnie.
Hi.
Mr. Dattler.
Hi.
Mr. Prado.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes. The motion so passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, next item on the new business is ordinance twenty-two dash ten. Amending the zoning regulations to add as a quote special use unquote in the B two district self-storage facilities. We have motion to solve prove ordinance twenty-two dash ten.
So move, DiAtly.
Second.
Moved by DiAtly, seconded by Hoffman to approve ordinance twenty-two dash ten, amending the zoning regulations to allow special use self-storage facilities. Any further comments, questions or discussion?
Well, I'd like to go on record as having my previous comment for twenty twenty-two dash nine be applied to this. But with an additional question. So again, I wanna make sure I'm doing this correctly. We're not gonna, as a board, we're not gonna have any discussion this evening among the board as to advantage or disadvantages of this. My, my question isn't that.
You, you could have that discussion.
My, my main question would be.
But it doesn't quite any particular, there's no application to have a special use yet. It's the same process that we just described uh for the, the other situation.
So, so perhaps I could ask my question now to apply to the previous one, which we did approve. Um so there is some tax revenue generated from these potential changes, right? Uh business tax, sales tax, property, property tax, right, for all these possible, possibly for, for these things.
And there's no business tax that the, that village charges or shares in, but uh there could be sales tax. And potentially there's certainly be an increase in the real, real property tax. Uh if a vacant property uh was targeted for this special use or for the. Or for the other use of banquet facility.
So ultimately there is revenue that's generated. By whatever type of business went to these areas. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Thorin.
Hi.
Mr. Hardy.
Hi.
Mr. Deatley.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Prado.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes. The motion so passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, any other new business to come before the board?
Uh, that's something to throw out. Um, I had a brief conversation, uh, with, uh. Just in general about looking to see if the village in the future will be some consideration to put in pickleball courts. Um, it's, uh, a growing sport. You can put, uh, a court in for roughly thirty-five thousand dollars. That's without lights. And maybe as we look in the future of things we might be doing with. A park and potentially linking things together. I know there was some conversation. Some months ago about the opportunity, maybe where if you, uh, link certain, certain type of, uh. Facilities, recreation facilities together. Maybe there's additional funds and money and so forth. Um, I know we are physically within the Dundee Park District, but. Looking at something that would be, uh, you know, sleepy hollow court, so to speak. Uh, but it's not just something I throw out there.
The, uh, volleyball courts up there were donated to the village by the service club.
Uh, the ones, uh, by the pool?
Those were not Park District. Those were sleepy hollow. Well, the service club.
But tennis courts are up there. That's part of the Park District. Cause in some cases tennis courts are actually restripped or striped in addition. If they're playing tennis, you can also play pickleball on tennis court. You can just blow over the net, which is, so that's what they do over at Linkin Elks.
Does that come with or without sesame seed bun?
You know, though, it's, it's, uh, I don't know if anybody play. I've been playing since January. I love it. It's, uh. Just, uh, relaxing time and if anybody does want to play, let me know. You know, as we know, we're bringing the village into the twenty-second generation. Century.
Okay. I know when I discuss the playground equipment, I could see what an add-on would cost. For pickleball, it's, it's, that's just growing recreational. The thing is, it'd be great if the resident wanted to open.
We have a shop.
Raise your hand and take off. For a small.
Anyway, I mentioned it just as a conversation. That's what I go on the next agenda, but.
Think about?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. Any other comments for the cut of the cause? Motion to adjourn.
Second, Deatley.
Moved by Harley, seconded by Deatley to adjourn. This one I'm going voice call. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned. See you on the fifteen.